Okay, great. I will call this March 25th, 2021 Council on Housing meeting to order at 2:03 PM. So we will go over welcome and introductions. So we'll go around the virtual room here. So I'm Mike Rizzatello. I'm the City Administrator for City College Place and Chair of this body.
I'm Robert Lee. I'm the Financial Director at the Star Project.
I'm Craig Villar. I'm the President of Walawala Lands for the Homeless.
I'm Elizabeth Chamberlain, Deputy City Manager, City of Walawala.
Renee Ricker, Executive Director of the Walawala Housing Authority.
Julie Reinhold, Pioneer United Methodist Church Faith Representative.
Andrea Vichella Behringer, Walawala Valley NPO.
I'm Kathy Covey, CEO of Blue Mountain Action Council.
I'm Catherine Venango with Community Council.
Tim Millia with Catholic Charities in representing the youth and young adult homelessness efforts.
Hi, Anne Marie Zelcherin, YWCA Walawala, representing domestic violence survivors.
Randy Henshla, City of Waitsburg.
Hi, I'm Rachel Elton-Bine. I'm with Community Council.
Hi, I'm Becky Turner. I'm the Executive Director of the Star Project.
Jay Potts, City of Prescott.
Okay, great. I think that covers everyone. So we will move to item number two, which is approval of the February 25th, 2021. Then it's I want your king of motion.
Hey, Mike, could I, before you do that, I wanted to say, in the minutes, it says that Common Roots is working to secure funding from Sherwood Trust. I would change it to say is applying for a grant from Sherwood Trust?
Oh, okay. So are there any other others or things the members have noticed? Otherwise, what they are, I will entertain a motion taken that have it into account.
Second.
Okay, there is some, okay, any further comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any against, say nay. Okay, eyes have it. Thank you. Item number three, Housing Needs Assessment. Elizabeth.
Thank you. Just a quick update on where we're at with the Regional Housing Action Plan. So the Housing Needs Assessment is pretty much wrapped up. We did make, forwarded some comments back to the consultant on some of the data. We had some discrepancies between the Housing Needs Assessment and then some of the work through the Community Council's Affordable Housing Study. So we're just kind of reconciling some of those data tables and whatnot in the Housing Needs Assessment. But we are pretty close to having the draft plan ready to go. And I reviewed it last week and then sent some comments back to the consultant. So I expected either tomorrow or early next week. And so then we'll be working on getting that out publicly for feedback and comments, also to the other jurisdictions who are part of the the planning, because then we're going to start working through our various planning commissions and ultimately our city councils for adoption of the plan. So that's kind of where we're at with the with the process and whatnot. So if there's any questions, happy to answer those.
Elizabeth?
Oh, I see. Yes.
Let us know what we as a council on housing and what we as members can do to urge public participation in any comment sessions, et cetera.
Perfect. I will, I will do that. I'll definitely share it with this group and then maybe put some thoughts of where that advocacy can can happen. We had some great response when we did our survey at the back in December. I think we had over 450 responses to the survey, which was great. And so that, a lot of that was incorporated into the plan as well. But but yes, I will definitely see how we can get that, get it broadly disseminated out.
I have a question about the Housing Needs Assessment. I don't know if this goes this microscopic into policy, but within the analysis, did it make any reference to about like the county county planning policies need to be amended or updated to deal with the whole UGA issue? Or maybe if you could shed some light on that, Elizabeth?
Yes, we do talk about as one of the strategies that we do need to look at the urban growth areas for the cities, but I don't recall off the top of my head if we got that detailed about countywide planning policies. So let me, I can look at that, Mike, and then circle back by the end of the meeting, because I just don't recall off the top of my head.
That'd just be great, because just while, just while we're doing this early stuff before we give them a comprehensive planning updates, I just want to make sure we don't get tripped up again by obscure policy from decades ago.
One of the, I know John, Megan Bailey with Dayton, myself, we participated in Catherine and reaching after me, remind me of the name of the implementation Task Force Group. Is it the local policy group? We attended their meeting a couple, maybe about a month or so ago. And we talked about that very same thing, Mike, that perhaps that entity could help us advocate to the county that, so it's not just the cities beating the drum that we need to, you know, amend the countywide planning policies and look at those things, but perhaps the Implementation Task Force on Policy could help us out with some of that advocacy.
Yeah, that that'd be great. I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of the adjust, because this is like the time to like fix all of that. So the next go around, it goes smoother.
Yep, agreed.
I think in order to do that, we need, you know, some real clarification for the group who don't know a ton about the issue, so that you could educate the group so that they could be effective advocates.
Okay. We can work on that as a next steps.
Yeah, maybe the next meeting, Elizabeth, and I'm sure John and I'd be willing to help with you as well on this. Maybe a little flyer document that we could go over with this body about exactly what are the perceived issues with the policies? And essentially what led to the breakdown, the last go around, because I, because I mean, that is going to affect like the success of the implementation of the needs assessment going forward.
Sure. Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Okay, are there any other further questions on this agenda topic?
Elizabeth, is there already a plan in place for public outreach around the housing plan, or is that to be developed?
Well, we have an engagement plan. It's really just to kind of share the, share the plan on our, you know, our website, our our social media platforms. I'm going to share it with this group. And then I'll share it with any of the Implementation Task Force folks and just ask that you all share it with your networks as well and then participate in any, any feedback. I would say our big public participation component of the plan was was the survey information that we, or the survey that we put out, and then the information we collected back through that. I wasn't, at this point, planning on, on kind of a virtual open house or anything at this stage of the plan. But if if that's something that's desired, I can certainly explore, explore looking into something like that. But we're getting to the point now where we're going to probably have to start, because each city now needs to take it through our own kind of Planning Commission Council bodies. And so we're, it's still regional in the sense that the whole plan is focused on our, on our cities and Dayton, but we're, the approval processes are going to be kind of funneled down into our own jurisdictions steps.
Okay, any other comments or points of clarification? Okay, now hearing any, thank you for that presentation, Elizabeth. We will go to item number four, which is Community Land Trust Update. Rachel.
Hi, so there's not much
Yes.
update since the last update from last month. We did submit that grant request for to fund a full-time director position for Common Root Housing Trust. We've been doing that picture with us and we're awaiting response. We've also been doing work on selecting the founding board of Common Root Housing Trust. And then once we have the founding board in place, we'll work towards becoming a nonprofit. So hopefully within the next month, we will have that founding board in place and start taking those steps. We are going to have a work session with Walawala City Council on April 26, I believe, at four o'clock. And we're pursuing, we're starting, we want to start discussions with local governments about surplus public land and the potential for using surplus public land for common root housing development. Catherine, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yep, that's it.
Great. Is there any questions or discussion by anyone? Okay, well, hearing none, thank you for your presentation, Rachel. We will then go to item number five, which is the e-RAP and T-RAP update. Sam?
Yeah, so the e-RAP is again the eviction rent assistance program that's coming through the state, the additional $277,000. We have a subcontract with BMAC. They have restarted using the waitlist that was accumulating between the last date of the first round of funds being spent out. And then I'm working on an amendment with Walawala Immigration Rights Coalition for another portion of those e-RAP funds for rent assistance. Those ones have to be used by the end of June. And then T-RAP is the Treasury Rent Assistance Program. We do now have a contract for T-RAP, so I'm waiting for legal to approve that for a commissioner signature. And then, once we get that, we'll work on subcontracts. That is for a little more than $4 million for rent assistance to be used by the end of December. And then Kathy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I don't know if you have anything you want to share with e-RAP or how rent assistance is going.
Well, yeah, e-RAP, e-RAP, fine. And I think they're scheduled to meet that deadline. And the other piece, the T-RAP, the additional staff are being hired as we speak. I guess that Rick was on the phone call today with Commerce, I believe it was. Sam, you might have been on that call as well. He just impressed to me how important it's going to be to get going on this from his standpoint. So the sooner a contract from the commissioners can be in our hands, we will, we will proceed with hiring and setting some things up. But once we get that all done, it'd be nice to hit the ground running. And and I'm sure that you'll impress that upon the commissioners. Yep, it's all good. Yeah, I have no, no, no thoughts about how, how quickly. I, I know that we've done upwards of 10, $12,000 in a shot, you know, with the current funds. So the guidelines are basically the same, and there's some significant amount that 20% that you can spend on utilities. Is that right, Sam?
Um, I believe so. I will double, I will double check that, though.
I think that's what Liz told me. And we did get the contract for the Columbia and Garfield Counties already, so we can go full speed there. But I think that's what Liz said, and utilities could also be internet. And that was interesting. So a lot of money, but a lot of work, and we need to move, we need to move quickly.
Yeah, and I will definitely try to put some pressure on that. I know there were questions that they had when when I presented regarding the application. So there may be some further questions, but I can be prepared with, with answers for those and get working on a subcontract. In the meantime, I did set a meeting time for April 1st for the, excuse me, the Council on, or Council on Housing Rent Assistance Work Group, so that we can meet again and to chat about, because there's also going to be CDBG, CB2 funds potentially available. So we still have some of those, some of the CV1 funds for rent or mortgage assistance or utility assistance. And then with e-RAP and T-RAP, just wanting to ensure that we have a clear plan and that also that that plan includes outreach and more targeted outreach. I know with e-RAP, it was such a quick turnaround that there wasn't quite as much time or wherewithal regarding the outreach, but hopefully we can be thoughtful about outreach with the additional funds as well.
Excellent.
So Sam, just a quick question. I heard, and I just want to confirm, with the new rental assistance money that's been legislated nationally, is it up to 12 months of rental assistance that folks in need can access?
Yes, for the T-RAP, it's up to 12 months.
E-RAP, is that correct?
Um, yeah, although I need to double check, because I think Commerce was trying to adjust the e-RAP guidelines for this latest round of funding so that it mirrored T-RAP. So they have been thoughtful in that way of trying to reduce the confusion and administrative burden.
Yeah.
Hey, is there any further questions on this topic? Okay, hearing none, we'll go item number six, which is Community Development Black Grant CB2. Sam?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. And so I did send out that word chart and the email explaining that application process. That'll open April 1. Priority applications are to be submitted by the end of April. Walawala County, it includes entitlement and non-entitlement grantees this time. And Walawala County is looking at an eligible allocation of around $77,000. So again, that's part of the reconvening of the Council on Housing Rent Assistance Work Group. I'll be reconvening the Micro Enterprise Assistance Work Group as well. I do have some hesitations personally over just the administrative capacity related to the additional CDBG, CB2 funds. Curious to hear from, more from the Rent Assistance Work Group, hear from Liz and from BMAC regarding how that's all going and if additional funds will be useful. And then also from the Micro Enterprise Assistance Work Group. And with those, with the CV and CV1 funds that the county received for micro enterprise assistance, we partnered with the City of Walawala and their Small Business Relief Program. The county doesn't have the capacity to start or manage a micro enterprise assistance program, so definitely relied on that partnership. And I'm not up to date on the Working Washington Funds that have been added in or other small business pieces. So that was a sharp learning curve for me, but just wanted this group to be aware.
Sam, if it's helpful, and I know Jennifer has been invited to the meeting on April 1, since she sort of takes the lead on, on the CV1 and now the $2. We are likely looking at for our CV2 allocation, probably just to continue the focus on utility and rental assistance versus trying to do another round of business grants at this point, given the fact that we've got the Working Washington $4.00 and those open on Monday. And there was, there was a lot of management when it came to the micro business assistance. So just kind of more of a heads up for this larger group that that's probably where we're headed on our CV2 dollars.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Is there any further comments on this topic? Okay, hearing none, we'll go item number seven, 2020 rollover request to local housing funds. Becky Turner, Star Brown Jet. Becky?
Thanks for having me, everybody. I appreciate it. So the Star Project left some dollars on the table at the end of 2020 as part of our housing contract with Walawala County Department of Community Health for the homeless housing funds. This was related to a PPP draw that we took at the beginning of the opportunity during COVID. And I also want to introduce Star's Finance Director, Robert Lee, who is also on the call, who has a little bit more information, and I'd like to turn that over to him.
Thanks, Becky. Hi, everybody. We submitted our PPP loan the first day that we were able to do so. Of course, we'd heard that there were, and you probably all did too, that there was a, this could easily have run out of money. So we wanted to get a jump on it. And in those early days, we there was only an eight-week option that we had available to use those funds. And we did. We used all of our payroll for our, for all of our programs were charged to that loan. But that meant we, we couldn't get reimbursement from the county for the program operations we would have charged to our housing grant. And so for May and June, we had very little to charge to the grant. And we ended up, as Becky had used the phrase, leaving money on the table at the year, we left $18,000 on the table. Now, if we had, if the PPP loan hadn't been available to us, if we had requested reimbursement under the grant, we would have had only $3,000 to $4,000 left over. Rather than, oh, because we would have requested $14,000 or $15,000 more for the months of May and June combined. We can make good use of that rollover amount, and Becky's going to talk a bit about that, but it would, it would be great to have those funds to be able to rely on them. So as we have in the, so that we don't have to, as we have in the past, rely on in-person, in-person fundraising events. Who knows if we'll even be able to do that this year? So we're requesting that rollover money because we can make good use of it. And I'm going to turn that back over to Becky to talk a bit more about the program operations side of it.
Thanks, Robert. So as far as operations are concerned, the Star Project remains open and at the same capacity that we were in, both in 2019 and 2020. We didn't have any significant pause or change to our, our client services model. At this point, we're starting to migrate back into the office, and we've had some staffing changes. And so right now, I am working on training up new staff members, specifically our housing coordinator. And we could make good use of those funds in the actual housing program operations. And I'm not sure what kind of questions this, this body is going to have, so I'm more than happy to answer them.
So this is Renee, and I'm very supportive of rolling these funds over to 21. I don't know if this body can make that recommendation. But 2020 being a pandemic year, 21 still a pandemic year, the situations are unusual and unprecedented. And I would hate to see the Star Project operations suffer, because we are being, we would be too rigid and not providing that flexibility. And that's just my point of view.
Thank you, Renee. And that's, that's a good point. 2020 was certainly an unprecedented year. In the six years that I've worked at the Star Project, we've never had to request rollover funds. There were some unique circumstances that arose as a, as a result of the pandemic in 2020 that resulted directly in this ask today.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree, 2020, as well as so far this year, have been basically freaky years, and we have to not be rigid with monies. We need to be flexible while this is still going on. So I mean, I do believe it's within the purview of this body where we can make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners where we're at and in the purview of housing. And I feel this is within the purview. So I mean, I will go up to comments, but I definitely think it'd be great to see a motion of some sort to recommend a rollover, given everything that's been going on the last year.
Well, I make that motion so we can put it on the table.
Okay, excellent. There is a motion that exists. Is there a second?
Anne Marie seconded.
Okay, there is a second. Any further comment?
Yeah, I've got some, I just wonder from Sam, is this restricted to have needed to have been spent? I mean, what, we can recommend to the, to the commissioners, and I think that's very appropriate. We should do so. But is there state, is there state regulations that this money had to have been spent?
Um, that's a great question. And I'll definitely confirm it, but I, I, this has already gone through legal and that the recommendation from legal was for the Council on Housing to make the decision and recommendation regarding the funds.
Okay, perfect. Well, that is, I call for the vote.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor of the rollover, say aye. Aye. Any against, say nay. Okay, great. Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, okay, item A, other business. So targeted study on subsidized housing and supportive housing. Sam, if you want to take this, because I got to deal briefly with the city matter afoot at the moment. So.
That sounds very enticing. Um, yeah, so the, the targeted study on subsidized housing, supportive housing, so on and so forth, was something that we had talked about during the January Council on Housing meeting when Elizabeth presented on the, how the Housing Needs Assessment was going. So this was something that the Council on Housing talked about being interested in to see what that information might tell us in relation to also then the Housing Needs Assessment as far as targeted like strategies for increasing access to affordable housing. And then I know Renee, you looked into the consultant that you had. And that led to just some more questions that I guess I have for this Council on Housing regarding thoughts on, on where the, the funds for such a consultant doing the study would come from, any anticipated costs? And then that would likely, and my thought would be that it would lead to some kind of task force that would then help in drafting an RFP and creating scoring criteria, but wanted to, to check in with folks and make sure I didn't drop any red balls regarding that conversation.
So the consultant I approached that has done work for us, he was mildly interested, would be more interested, but he's not going to move forward on anything without seeing a RFP so that he fully understood the scope of work being asked for. I guess he's had some poor experiences in the past.
And that makes sense. Yeah, so I guess my questions then are still, if that's something that this group is, is still interested in or would still see value in. or would still see value in, and then if so, are there folks that are willing to assist in, in creating an RFP? Are there funds that come to mind as far as using this? I can find out on my end what kind of funds might be able to be used, but definitely would need help as far as figuring out anticipated costs and then establishing an RFP and scoring criteria for this type of, of report or assessment.
Well, just from experience, the cost will probably be around ten to fifteen thousand dollars, just as a ballpark. And then it's, what is, what is the end goal? I understand the assessment and that, that funding sources currently are really focused on permanent supportive housing. And you can tell the need by that, when we can do a point in time count, which we can't now. But you know, Home Alliance for the Homeless should be able to give us a good count of the homeless population they are working with. The same with the Y Christian AIDS Center. I mean, I, so I don't know where we get the money.
So a couple of things on the funding. I, I like Renee's estimated cost because I was thinking like fifty thousand dollars would be kind of where we're at just knowing what we've spent on the Regional Housing Action Plan and some other planning documents. But I like ten to fifteen thousand. That's, that's a good, that's a workable number. But I'm wondering, because you have on, on the next agenda there, Sam, you know, all the funding that we're supposed to be getting through, you know, ARPA and then, so I don't know if that maybe is a possibility since, you know, housing has been obviously affected with the pandemic. It's as far as the city's allocation, we are still learning what we can spend it on. So we, we do not have anything identified at this point. But with only ten to fifteen thousand dollars, I'm wondering if between the county and College Place, Wallowala, we can't all chip in a little bit of, of our ARPA money towards that might be a possibility.
Well, yeah, that's why I was gonna say, I know with some of the guidance I've seen come out on the money is gonna be passing through, it seems like as long as you can make a very weak tangential case connecting it with COVID and it, and it seems like anything from utilities, the housing even delaying infrastructure projects because you ran out of money, that those funds could be used to do that sort of thing. So I think if we all together chip in on this, I mean, I, I'm in the same boat as you was, but I, I thought originally a number was gonna be in the fifty thousand range. So fifteen thousand between everyone, I think is very manageable. Yeah, so, so I'm, so I mean, really with doing this targeted study, I mean, part of it is a, we get the contract for the COVID money, actually make sure what they're saying we can use it for, we can use it for. But then beyond that, I think we need a group together to develop a RFP or for Nate, if you have one from the past that maybe could be tweaked, that could fit into this. I think that would be good as well.
I can, I can look in files and, and see.
Okay, that, that'd be great.
So maybe, do we meet in April? We do, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe by then, you know, we're gonna know a little bit more about where, you know, how, when we can apply for our ARPA money because the city has to submit, since we'll be, we get ours directly from Treasury, we have to submit the certificate of need, but no one knows what the certificate of need looks like and how we have to fill it out. So we're kind of waiting on some of that information, but maybe by April, we might know some answers to that. And maybe we can, maybe have like a draft RFP ready by April, or, or I'm just tossing out ideas. But we may know more on the funding front by our next meeting.
You know what the funding levels are? I mean, are we talking, this is a pittance compared to the total or?
Yeah.
It is a pittance. City of Wallowala is about nine million dollars.
City of College Place is about two point one million dollars. So yeah, we're all due substantial amounts. And then I know the counties given quite a bit of money too.
And the funds are pretty broadly, you, you need to submit this certificate of whatever. But besides that, it's, it's just anything related to, to the, the city's need for helping to recover from COVID, correct?
That's what's come out so far, but I, but I'm still waiting to see the official undocumented thing because with the previous fund stuff changed all the time. That's what, at least I've been told today.
Well, it'd be my suggestion that this group wait to hear what, if, if this is a possibility. I, I can't think of anything that's gonna move the needle in our recovery efforts with housing the homeless, which is, you know, grows by the day. And, and we are really going to see some things open up, not for the good, when the eviction moratorium is lifted. We need permanent supportive housing in, in Wallowala. And I think it's a matter of substantiating it, but, but honing down on exactly what that looks like and what we need in it, which is what this consultant would do. So I, I think we move forward with an RFP, once you all hear if your funds can be used as soon as possible. Maybe we put, put the pieces of that together with Renee's help or, or whomever, and so that it's ready to hit the button to go. When we, when we hear.
Yep, I would concur with that. Uh, any further comments on the topic?
Um, I, I think it would help me to have maybe a little clarity on who then wants to get together to solidify an RFP that's ready for us to hit the button on.
Sam, I'll help you. It's Renee.
Yeah, and, and I'll help too, and yeah.
All right, any other takers? We'll also need to, my understanding is that we need to have a scoring criteria established at the time of our RFP, rather than waiting until proposals come.
Yes, it needs to be included in the RFP.
Yep.
Sam, I can help too, if that makes sense.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So we got that set up. So we'll go, I don't be American Rescue Plan Act. I mean, we let the cat out of the bag a little bit with the, the cities are due quite a bit of money as our counties and then school districts as well are getting money to, to cover gaps from students who decided to not be in the, the district and do alternative education measures. So there, we're just waiting for final guidance from the feds essentially and how this will go down. Beyond that, Sam, do you have any additional information, like on the county side? What, maybe there've been thoughts about what they're using their part for, if any of that's going toward housing or anything?
I do not know, but I can certainly try to inquire and find out. I had added it on there. I got a message from, from Rachel and Rachel, I don't know if there's anything you want to, to bring up or, or discuss during this piece, but just wanted to be sure to not lose it. I know there's a lot of things happening all the time these days.
Yeah, and there's a lot of items in the act that relate to housing. And so I had a few questions, just attending National Longcome Housing Coalition calls about the act and learning what's in it in relation to housing. And I heard that one in relation to what we just talked about, that the ten billion dollars that's been allotted for funding for services for people experiencing homelessness can be used for acquiring permanent supportive housing. So not just shelter, but permanent supportive housing. And so I heard that they're going through Project Home and is this something that we want to consider here in terms of acquiring that housing and not just thinking about immediate shelter and using that funding? And so that's one item that came up. And then I also heard that there's gonna be ten billion dollars in a homeowner's assistance fund, which will help to pay, help with mortgage payments for folks who are underwater because of the crisis and can't afford to pay their mortgage payments if they have privately backed mortgages in particular. There's been a problem with that. And so I wanted to know, do we know anything at this point? Who that money is going through, how folks will be able to access that money?
Yeah, so that's Lynn LeWaiso.
What, where, Rachel?
Yeah.
The T-RAP funds.
Sorry, I can't, Kathy, I can't hear you. Someone else is talking.
I think Anne Marie's not muted. And, yeah. So the, the T-RAP funds can be used for mortgage payments too. I think it's less than the rent assistance number of months. The E-RAP funds can be used for mortgage as well. No? Okay, so it's T-RAP then that is making a distinction on mortgages. That's what Liz tells me.
I think it might just be the CDBG. I don't know, but it could have, I know that those have been changing. It could have changed too.
The, Rachel, the funds you're talking about, I did miss the first part of what you were saying. Where, where are they coming from?
Okay, so the one for, to address homelessness, homelessness will come through Project Home, which could be used for acquiring permanently supportive housing, not just immediate shelter, but permanent supportive housing for the homeless. And so I think, you know, it's up to the discretion of the jurisdiction to decide, do we use this for shelter? Do we use a portion for shelter? Do we use a portion for acquiring permanent supportive housing? But the funding does allow that. So it, it doesn't have to be allocated purely to shelter. So.
And the home, home funds come from HUD, Renee, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So you have any idea how they're gonna come down?
So it'll be a formula allocation. The Housing Authority will be getting additional vouchers through this act and we're supposed to know as soon as May, first part of May.
The other funds through Home, we don't know anything else about. Does that sound?
We're not, we're not a participating jurisdiction, so it'll go through Commerce.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's, it's up in the air, it sounds like.
And they'll do their formula allocation.
And it will be formulated out to jurisdictions like?
Counties.
The, the counties. So in the case of Columbia and Garfield, it will be to BMAC. In the case of Wallowala, it will be to the county Department of Health, SAM Shop. And, and that what I'm sure we would have something to give input on that as well.
Yeah, I would hope that the county would use this body to vet how the monies are used.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we're gonna get a lot of funding and we should use it wisely and very strategically to address the needs because the needs aren't gonna go away. They're just gonna be larger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that housing needs assessment and this other assessment we're looking into will be timed quite perfectly, it sounds like.
Great.
And then Kathy, for the mortgage assistance, then, you know, we're continually updating our housing and utility relief information sheet. Should we direct people to BMAC if they need help with mortgage?
Um, let me clarify with Liz what, where she got that information and, and Sam as well, and stay tuned.
I thought it was E-RAP.
E-RAP for emergence, for mortgage assistance?
Yeah, the second round, I believe, had mortgage assistance in there.
Okay, well, that's what we need. We got some back and forth here. I, I thought that T-RAP modeled E-RAP, only gave us lots more money and extended some timeframes. So I was thinking that it also would go for mortgage assistance. So we got some questions to answer. Rachel, if you don't, maybe, maybe this whole body, we should get the answers to those questions out. But Rachel, if you don't hear something in the next few days from, from Sam and Liz and my office or whomever, rattle us a bit and we'll get those out to everybody.
Okay, thanks. And there were just a couple of other things that I thought were, listening in on the National Longcome Housing Coalition calls about the American Rescue Plan Act, which I thought were useful. One was that to be eligible for the child tax credit, the new tax credit, the up to thirty six hundred dollars per child. Everyone who's eligible needs to fill out, file their taxes, even if they've never filed taxes before. And a lot of very low income folk might not be in the habit of filing taxes because they don't have anything to account for. And do we have anything set up to assist folks in that position to file those taxes so that they can receive that tax credit?
Isn't the Senior Center helping with taxes? They've done that in the past, or the AARP?
Yeah, and they, even though the deadline has been extended to May something, right? They're gonna only do it through the, the end of April. So people need to get in touch with the Senior Center. AARP is staffing that and they're, they're seeing lots of clients.
I know that we talked about helping in-house with our own residents and, and clients. We've done that a couple of times already, but I don't think we're set up to do like community walk-ins.
Yeah.
So recommend folks go to the Senior Center for assistance.
And, and it doesn't have to be seniors and it doesn't have to be low income. Made the announcement to our staff today. They're quite good, very, very efficient. And within twenty-four hours, you usually get a call that says, hey, we've got your paperwork all done. It's a little different. You, you drop your paperwork off and then they call you and say, let you know when it's done. So you can come in and spaced and, and all of that, sign your documents.
And there's no fee, Kathy?
Oh, no, no, yeah, yeah. It's great.
Thanks. And then just another question. I've heard about different programs assisting folks who are experiencing homelessness to access their stimulus check and that they're eligible for. I just wanted to check in and find out what we have in place here about that.
I didn't quite hear the, the question. What, what's it called?
Programs to help people who are experiencing homelessness access their stimulus check.
Well, I think Craig's got that covered, don't you, Craig?
Negative.
Negative. I see lots of materials on it, but I don't, are, are you, are you hearing from any of your clients, Craig, that are having trouble?
No, we're not hearing anything, but we're also not helping.
I, yeah, I think this was something that we had talked about during the shelter provider call last week and then also the housing provider meeting too. And there are some challenges. While the Senior Center can assist with folks filing their taxes, there remain to be challenges around mail, people being able, if they don't have a, an address or, because there's some, some tricky points around keeping and holding that kind of mail for people. So I don't know, Rachel, if you, if you're hearing of programs and might want and might want to share like how other folks are doing it, that, that could potentially be helpful. But I know that was, that was a sticking point or kind of a challenging thing that, that was discussed when talking about those, the stimulus checks.
This was a while ago on Washington Longterm Housing Alliance call, but they did feature, I forget which organization on the West Side working with folks who are experiencing homelessness that came up with a program, I think to address all these barriers. So it might be worthwhile to check in with the Washington Longterm Housing Alliance and find out which program that was exactly to get in touch with them.
Awesome. Yeah, I could definitely try to, try to find that and, and share it. Yeah, I think the sleep center might be the trickier. I think YWCA and Christian Aid Center can offer some assistance and mailing that sort of thing, so. Yeah.
Okay, any further comment on the other agenda item? Okay, Siang Ng, is there any other comments for go to the order?
Mike, I did want to maybe point out that the Council on Housing vacancies.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Should we point that out with the, with the group?
Yeah, I mean, so we have the hospital vacancy, but so, so yeah. Basically, if anyone knows anyone that works over Providence, please alert them to this. So that way we could get the app position filled. But then the other one, from what I saw looking at the minutes, isn't it the commissioners?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's been a commissioner vacancy for a bit there. The hospital vacancy, I imagine, will be challenging to fill at this particular time with the vaccine rollout. I think we still have a veterans vacancy. And then now the legal attorney vacancy, because Tyler Graber is relocating to the Olympia area, which is sad, but.
You know, I was also wondering, I know that there was a slot for education. I don't know if that was required or recommended, but when I'm listening to sort of the rollout of getting funds to people, it strikes me that having schools engaged would be really essential too because, especially when you're thinking about the child tax credit, right? So how are we connecting to those families who can actually really benefit from that? Is there a, a link to our schools and those populations more directly?
I think we're required to have the McKinney-Vento Homeless Youth Counselor on this body. And, and I believe that would be.
Pam Clayton.
Okay, well, we've got.
Walla Walla Public Schools anyways. There are obviously other schools.
We need the biggest district to take that spot. They've got the most homeless youth. So do we need to reach out to Wade? I'm happy to do that if there's nobody else that would be seeing him in the next day or so. I have a call in to him about another matter. I can just let him know. We'd really like that. Was, have they ever been on? I, I mean, I'm talking in the last, since we've been formed as a council, okay.
Kathy, if you want to bring it up with Wade, that's fine. I think Kristi Kretulas, she supervises Pam's position. And so I don't know if we want to go directly to her rather than Wade. I'm happy to do that if that would be.
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense, Tim. Let's do that.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to Kristi on, to have representation. And then, Sam, did we have a hospital representative in the past? And could you remind me who that was if we?
Was it Kathy Orb?
I think, but that was prior to me moving into the, this position February of last year. And then I think Becky was in that position for, I don't know if it was officially as a voting member, but Becky was attending for a period of time.
Okay. Because Tim and I could definitely work on that. We're both on the hospital board.
That, that would be great. And, and then Sam, from the county commissioner's side, we just need to, you could maybe bug one of them to.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I can inquire. I can, yes, I will do that.
Well, Sam, let, let me make this offer too, because you're an employee of the county, that that might be an uncomfortable position to put you in. And so I am happy to step into that if, or if somebody else wants to do it, I will gladly hand it to you. But do we know, like, who would be the appropriate? Because they have certain assignments, each county commissioner. And so I think Jim Johnson was the one that was, was last a, a part of this, I believe, before his cancer treatments. And so what, I don't, I don't even know what their assignments are currently.
I, I don't think we need to be, I think it's their responsibility to have someone, but I think we have the obligation to our mission to have, be able to say to them, this is who we would like to have represent this issue. And, and it's not Jim Johnson's replacement by any shout of the, nothing. So, and, and I would say that, that the person with the most longevity with this council, whatever it looked like many years ago, and, but, but all the county programs is, is Greg Tompkins. So, but I, I mean, I don't have a choice, a recommendation between those two. I'm just suggesting, I, I hope this wouldn't be the case, but I'm just suggesting that they, I don't know how important they think this is. We believe it's important. And if they didn't believe it was important, it would be shifted to Jenny because she's the new one here is more, you know, and that's just not, I, I just hope that wouldn't be the case.
If I may interject, those assignments are made very early in the year and those assignments are done. I'll gladly ask who's our representative because I had to do so for the MPO as well. And maybe.
So you think they've probably assigned it and Sam doesn't know?
They've assigned it and, and probably didn't push the person to do it because my first, my first two meetings this year were taking place without a county commissioner too. Because the person who was assigned that duty did not show up until, you know, until I nudged them and said, oh, yeah, by the way.
Yeah, well, I know Greg very well, very personally. I'd, I'd like to have a stab at, at talking with him.
Okay. That works.
All right, so then legal, do we just re-ask Tyler if he has a replacement in mind?
That would probably be the best route to find out maybe who they're backfilling his position with.
All right, I can do that. Because I need to make sure that I have the, the staff that's going to be coming to the housing provider meetings in his place on the email list for that. So I'll ask if that's also the person who will step in to the Council on Housing until his replacement is hired.
Is there any other comments on this subject, any other item? Or anything else for go to the order? Okay, well, hearing nothing, then we will adjourn this meeting then at 3:02 PM. The next meeting will be April 28th, 2021 at 2:00 PM. So thank you, everyone.